Good evening. You're now viewing the town of Scottsville's recording and meeting stream for the town council work session on Monday, January 10th, 2022. My name is Matt Lawless. I serve as Scottsville's Town Administrator. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, open meeting laws, and the town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-19 emergency. The meeting is being held physically at the town office 401 Valley Street. We also have opportunities for the public and town council members to participate remotely, calling in by phone or joining our Zoom meeting. We also appreciate if you're watching this recording in the future on the town's YouTube channel. We'll switch over our cameras and audio now and come to order in just a moment. Thank you very much. Could you do us, make a sound check here? See what you, see what you pick up?
One, two.
Does that sound okay in the audience?
Sounds good from my perspective. I can hear you guys.
All right, my apologies. Would you like to try a mic and sound check now?
I can hear you guys, if you can hear me.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can hear also.
One, two. I can hear two.
All right. My apologies for the technical difficulties. We set up on another computer. So I think we are good to go with everyone in attendance from town council, everyone in attendance on staff. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Jenkins, Chief of Police, and I want to thank you all for having me here this evening. Just wanted to let you know that my first week was last Monday, right? And wow, what a first day. Did you order that up for me or what? Just for me. Well, what we were able to do is, you know, it was Monday, first thing in the morning, we had a major winter storm roll through the area. And there were a lot of residents and business owners, especially on, I guess, the north side of the town, as many of you all know. So I mainly checked on the residents that had called into the police department, ECC, made sure that they had everything they needed, gave them some opportunities to be able to get their friends and other family. I did some assessments on trees that had fallen against some of the houses just up here on the side of the hill, just going out of town. Worked with Appalachian Power. When the tree come down, just, I guess, north of Lumpkin's, they wanted us to assist with the road closure there, that big tree had pulled down the paladins across the road. So I worked with one of the contractors with Appalachian Power. They blocked off the upper side of the highway. I come down to Lumpkin's and he was blocking the road off and trees started falling down around both of us. So I told him, you need me? He called me back. I'm not sitting under those trees anymore. But one of the trees actually fell, hit the power line and the transformer and come down on the backside of the pickup truck. The lens, like, exploded. So I went ahead and left, but we kept the road closed down for, gosh, a better part of two days before they were able to get the power restored. Continued to check with the folks here at the community center to make sure that they had heat and everything that they needed to maintain themselves there in that building. Food line, of course, lost the majority of their stock, especially the cold stock in the freezer part. I was told by one of the managers that Appalachian Power was supposed to have had an inspector from Appalachian Power down two weeks ago to do an inspection of that generator, but they never showed up. And it's, everything's set and ready to go, they just needed the approval to be able to flip the switch, turn the generator on, but that hadn't been done yet. Warming stations, Matt and I worked together. Warming stations started coming up Wednesday. Got notification from the fire department, Alamo County Fire Rescue, that warming stations were coming up throughout the county. They put one down here at the community center as well. That, my knowledge, is still open as of today. And I'll probably get an update from the fire rescue department from Alamo on whether or not they contained the things there. Matt and I were on a conference call this morning. Fire rescue was getting information from the different power companies. And as of this morning, there were about 200 residents in Alamo County that did not still have power. So they wanted some assistance from our police department to help make contact with some of the residents that live on Pat Dennis Road and Alamo Roland Road South, just to make sure they were doing okay. And what I found was there were three residents that weren't home, and the other portion down on Roland Road South had the power back. So I knew Alamo County PD was working on the north and east and west side of the county to try to touch base with those residents. I think there was 200 residents reported out of power. I think that I haven't gotten an updated list on exactly how many still remain with that power, but I think everyone on the south side of Alamo County, especially in the town that powered, that we should be in pretty good shape. I continue my work with ACPD and Lexapro on revising our policy manual for the police department, making sure that our policy manual meets best practices for state and national practices in law enforcement. So it's a work in progress. We probably continue to push out two, three, four policies each week that we meet, we meet once a week on Wednesdays with that team. And they're working to try to get a policy manual together that will suit our police department here in the town. Had my first opportunity this week to really start meeting a lot of the business owners here in town. Took some time out of the day yesterday and made my way up at least one side of the street and going out of the town to really start meeting the business owners of the town. Introducing myself to the community. I think I saw a meeting. Yeah. So started doing some of that staffing in the final phase of background for our full-time police officer. So hopefully, the background investigators and I'll get a full report back from ACPD, who does our backgrounds for us, on whether or not they're going to recommend this individual for consideration. So right now, it's me. We have Alan, the full, if we hire this next person, that'll be the two full times. And I've kept Gary Bastok on as, right now, a part of that part-time position. He's actually been helping me do a lot of the policy manual work. We've had some vehicle issues that we've had to work with as well. So he's helping me do a lot of the admin stuff in his part.
One more part-time patrol would be good.
One more part-time. Just speaking between Gary and I, our projection is maybe have him doing about 10 hours of work a week, and another part-time person doing 15, 20 hours a week. I'm hoping to be able to hire someone else part-time to be able to fill that part-time gap. Any questions?
Any questions? Sorry, your first week on the job is such an interesting one.
It was fun.
We've had a few couple of times where it's great.
Oh, it's, it's, it's not bad. I enjoyed, I enjoyed everything that, it was busy. I didn't think it was going to be that busy, but it was pretty busy. Today's been busy, but I think we'll, we'll get our legs underneath of it, so I think things will be very, very good. We, we, the biggest thing was welfare checks and people getting stuck in the middle of Valley and Main Street. People felt, I guess, that they'd come out front with passengers cars to drive around in 12 inches of snow, but that didn't work very well.
We need to quickly take your, me here, being with us, what you're doing for us. And if you have no further questions, we'll move on. Our agenda, and your certain ones to say, or if you want to, you can cut out where I had.
Thank you all.
The table was supposed to have a four-minute glass lunacy. Obviously, that's what we're doing to this one, so we know the court.
The ARB did not convene last week due to weather and power issues. We are still moving forward with our inventory process, so that will be late by the end. But I think we'll have our inventory of those ready for February. Matt, I'm trying to connect with you about resharing inventory with everybody through OneDrive, so we can go in and edit it ourselves.
That'd be great. Good, good early use of that.
Yeah. So can we try sharing that around with everybody?
Sure.
And then I'll get that work. Some of the efficiency of this Microsoft team. Yeah, so that's, that's where we are. So we'll be ready in February. We'll get more through it, it's outstanding, and that's why we're meeting this way. Oh, and I had to ask forward each type of fuel, type of site to everybody on the board. They really have made pretty big discussions about type of fuel. So I want to make sure they all are doing homework, so they're ready to talk about it. Something preliminary, I'm not sure what type of timeline is for meeting with us about that, but I had not seen our benefits.
Any questions? Planning Commission, hopefully, they had, he was, the meeting was rescheduled on, what, last Tuesday?
But that's right. The Planning Commission met last Tuesday, moved because of the New Year's Day holiday, and we were able to get a quorum of four out of five commission members. Mr. Gritsko was, was snowed in and out of power at home, but the other four had power in town and were able to join. So that was a productive meeting. Ms. Caltabiano acting as, as chair. They still need to appoint their regular chairman. In Mr. Gritsko's absence, they deferred that until next month. Lisa Caltabiano is the vice chair and senior member on that body now. I reported the town council actions, following up on Planning Commission's recommendations on zoning updates, so they appreciated that. Mr. Hyson shared good outreach work related to the community meeting that's coming up on Saturday. So we're working together, getting the word out on that, and I appreciate the help of everyone in the community to join us there that weekend. Planning Commission worked on a couple of old business items, a special use permit for tourist lodgings at 360 East Main Street. That's the historic tavern building on this side of East Main, going down towards reeling and rafting. There was an application to convert one of the two apartments in that building, the space above the hair salon, to tourist lodgings. Planning Commission recommended approval of that with no conditions, so that will be up on council agenda. The, the old tavern on East Main, upstairs part. Yes. The other old business item was the special use permit at 1075 Valley Street, mixed use at Lumpkin's. It's under new ownership now and was grandfathered non-conforming from the town's boundary adjustment in the 90s. So cleaning up the zoning there helps to maintain those uses into the future. There's no proposed change at that facility, just to legalize the mix of restaurant, apartment, and lodgings. Planning Commission recommended approval of that with no conditions as well. Those two items come to town council next week. Planning Commission's new business is a special use permit at 385 East Main Street. That's the old Goko gas station. There's a new local investor in that property. Jay Fang wants to buy it and restore the old uses there, the combination of the gas station, restaurant, and convenience store. The restaurant and convenience store are by right, but because the gas station is in the historic district, it requires a special use permit. And, and it's important for the investor to have some clarity on what they can do before they close on the property. So Planning Commission had some, some significant questions on that one, especially related to how it would look in the historic district. And they talked about working with ARB on things like dark sky compliant lighting, because the gas pumps might be open 24 hours and the kind of light fixture is important. So they called their public hearing for next month, but they still have some consideration and questions about that one. Yes, that's the, the first, the first question, and the investor had the same question. Would they, do they work or they sound? So they, they commissioned a full set of inspection reports from a specialist on that, and they all test sound. I spoke with that engineer on the phone to, to explain the inspection reports to me, and he explained the thorough testing that they did and how they are. They were sealed up well when it closed, and they're good to go, to get back into operation. The cosmetic issues on the upper part of the building might be more significant. Planning Commission, please.
Well, just curious about, uh, what's their gas state? What's the viability of the public thing? Why do we, like, we wouldn't know, like, because it's got left on the corner, right the type of fuel going up in front of the food line? Like, I was just curious to know more about, sort of, reusing things, but.
We, we asked that at the staff level, and it certainly affects the asking price.
Yeah.
But it's not unviable as just a retail and restaurant space, which is, it makes it worth a lot less.
Not really, is it?
I think maybe a little bit about this, because it's not viable. We want to speak in empty, say, if you're standing there, it'd be at least one of us here. If it's money, we can fix it.
Sure. The, the last item of new business at Planning Commission was a, a zoning update, a potential tax amendment related to home occupations. We reviewed the, the different rules around what we call Class A and Class B home occupations, because we have some interested investors working in home-based businesses that asked us to consider some new flexibility on those. We have a fair number of home office-type businesses now. Those are by right. You can have a engineering office or a bookkeeping office in your home with no special approval. There's no sign, there's no extra traffic, you just get a business license. By special use permit, we can award a Class B business license, which allows up to two employees and 1,500 square feet of workshop space for seamstress or cobbler or a small engine repair shop, and any number of things that you might do out of your home in a, in a workshop or a garage. The, the applicants that we met on last Tuesday make shoes. They, it's a UVA physician who studied women's health and arthritis and joint issues and maintains that high heels are bad for legs and patented. And so she, Dr. Casey Kerrigan patented this shoe design, which she, she claims is healthier, and 3D prints these from little rubber pellets.
Wow.
So the, the printing machine, I'll pass these now. They, they've, they're buying a property in town that has a barn, and what they would like to do is move their 3D printers, which are like Xerox machines. They'd like to move the, the shoemaking equipment into the barn and run their business out of this site. But they have more than two employees and might use more than 1,500 square feet. So they, they invite us to consider rural areas where there's a large lot and a barn-type building, that maybe this is the kind of business we'd want to make room for. So Planning Commission was interested to think more about that, and they're going to try to draft some suitable language. Late in delivering financial report this month because of the turnover and recruiting in our clerk's office. Between the turnover, the new hire, and the weather emergency, there wasn't time for a financial statement at the beginning of the month. But we'll work on that, Mr. Adalison, me this week, and try to bring that to you next week. We're at the halfway point in our fiscal year, and I was getting nervous about the first deadline coming up for American Rescue Plan reporting. We hadn't gotten super clear guidance from the Treasury Department about what needed to be in that accountability back to DC. And the, the first deadline was in January. Treasury Department moved that out to April. So I, I feel good about the projects that town council has approved, and we're making progress on them, so I can account for all of the Rescue Plan spending that we've done. Treasury had just been unclear about how they wanted that delivered to us, so they delayed publishing that guidance and moved the deadline to April. So we'll continue to report on progress for those projects and then share it back to DC in the spring.
Improving the landing.
I need to get pricing for the excavation work and think about the phasing of it and, and firm up what DCR can help with. Part of the, the town's goals with these projects is to maximize the help that other agencies give to us. And, and DCR is very interested in helping us with this. They want to improve the boat landing. They've expressed interest in building a canoe and kayak ramp that's separate from the other ramp. So I wouldn't want to bring in backhoes and plant trees, which then ended up being in the wrong place. So I think it's a set of DCR calls first, along with some cost estimates work. And we have, we have $5,000 for some pilot work that might be used for placing some landscaping stone or planting trees, but I wouldn't want to do that and then have it needed to be ripped out later. Yeah.
I think Phase One, that they're, that they're just folded and free, if I recall correctly.
Yep.
Yeah. Would you want to have price for the whole thing before you, before the other?
No, I think the, I think the bould, the boulders and trees make sense as the first part to go ahead and do.
Yeah.
Trees we very well might be able to get for free from friends like the forestry department or James River Association. That might be a good Arbor Day project. The landscaping stone is very expensive, so I'm interested in shopping that. The first couple of quarries and yards that I call, $5,000 doesn't get you very many giant stones.
Yeah.
So maybe keep working on that.
Yeah. I would like to see, I think, have Phase One done, this would be good. I think that would put it in place. But I think in some ways, the, the boulders and trees are the most crucial thing down there. I mean, if nothing else happened down there, throwing up that thing. Yeah, stop around.
Andy?
Well, I, I, I'll say for the district.
Okay.
It involves money, but I'll, I'll.
Okay.
Well, with holidays, if we're upon us, it's not real busy right here, we're away the holidays still, with our number of weekdays, of all, probably for weekends. But last Monday, I kept track with Matt, as best I could, and just to keep a bridge on the situation with the weather. Thursday afternoon, I got a, a call with Jack Axwell, who was out doing his damage assessment. And he saw a downed line over the department, so I made it over there, I made perfect the whole telephone line. Let's see, I talked to supervisor twice, a couple of times, over the last week, and if you may have read the paper, he was like the general board supervisor. So I thought, how bad do you only your supervisor is? We're having a meeting on Wednesday, and CenturyLink is giving their board a presentation. It's not a public hearing on anything, but if you have anything you'd like to say about CenturyLink, if you can go on the website, sign up for a speaking spot on matters, other things, we'll get. Pretty pleased up CenturyLink. And you, they're going to fill that up pretty quickly, probably, because there are only 10 slots, so it will start there. But if you email supervisor, the vice, anybody on the board, supervisors, if you comment stuff, that's really, this goes without saying, just to make sure that, he has assured me that emails will be turned over to CenturyLink, as promised, before we're gone. Welcome, Councilman Alex, that's it. Thanks for having me this evening.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Appreciate you stepping forward to taking the empty slot. We will keep you busy.
I'm hoping for it.
And we also want to welcome our new town clerk, Fabio Gonzalez, and his first day on the job. Keeping it busy, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hope everybody gets a chance sometime in the future to get yourself first thing on air. And tell them about yourself, and let's let's keep it on here as long as possible. If not, Mr. Bowling, anything they force?
Just a few things, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay? Good. I I took a closer look at the conditions that have been put on the Blenheim Road and the Bird Street special use permits. And had some discussions with Matt about that, and I'll I'll talk about that if appropriate later on in the agenda when it comes up. And that's really all I have for for this evening, Mayor.
I think so. Chief Jenkins did a good job of apprising us of the emergency work. We worked closely on that. And I really appreciate Admiral County Fire Rescue and Social Services opening up the thermal shelter right in town. I was glad to be able to help get the word out about that. And we worked pretty well on emergency management here in a a situation that we quickly realized that it was getting worse, the scale and duration of the power outages. It was good, good team emergency management, and I was glad to be here on site for it.
No, but a couple of things. So it's like, we all follow my Sure. One, I did want to bring up the the riverfront, the boat landing progress, so I brought that up, but again, like I said, it's still you've done this great. The packet boat. I got a very unpleasant personal look at that boat. I put it first in flight plan. And it's in trouble. A lot of the wood is really soft. Like, there's a lot of decay happening on that boat. And I ran into Frank Sherwood the other day. We were just chatting about it, and he knows that these were if he's willing to get approved people together, I volunteer my own time, especially but he mentioned that he forwarded like an itemized list of things that the boat needed to be updated. But I think it would be helpful for us to look at status.
Sure.
Because I don't want to use that boat. And I think we're getting very close to the point where if that replaces the whole thing, then so I think it'd be helpful if in the next month, if we get that itemized list together and say, how much money is it going to take to do that? It might take weeks, months for boats
And I appreciate the volunteer commitment along with it. It was it was largely built with volunteer labor. But some of those folks are moved on, fully retired, passed away, can't can't do the work like they did before. So it needs either another generation of volunteers or a new thought about what we might contract.
And then just like CSX follow-up. You know, one of the things on the riverfront, it's pretty much status quo. They haven't like simulated a lot of stuff down there. But one of the things last year, when we met with them a few years ago. But they're going to put barriers across the lay-in yard, or a section off, area where they're still learning material or whatever. And they haven't really followed through on that, so the barrier is still sitting on the riverfront from bank rather. And so I think it'd just be good to follow and say, hey, you know, I'm still concerned about this riverfront, if it's going to be organized. Where are you with any stuff with the little project?
Sure. I haven't talked to the foreman there in some time.
Yeah, so I think it's Oh, AR, we were we are still down there. We're still a town resident, had a lead, but he has declined. So we're neat. So if you know someone in town who has an interest in our north building, or who might be a good member of the city, he does stuff, does the marketing, preferably in the community, and it's sort of overly difficult. Of that, or a county fire order is sitting on that.
Is there just town members?
It's a five-person board, and the majority have to be town residents.
Okay.
So we have two right now that are out of town, or two in town, or need one more town.
All right. All up dealers out.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's going to take volunteers.
Treating them as historic exhibits might help. They need to be curated and cared for, climate control just the same way.
Yeah. I've been having great opportunity. And we're still on the on the ballot, having these backhoe projects, right?
Yes. Just that that it was some follow-up on some news that we that we that we had in here. The the town made a couple of comments related to the General Assembly District maps. And I think those were partially successful. The adopted maps shown illustrated in your packet put the entire town in one congressional district, and the fifth district is less sprawling than it had been in the past. So I think that would be helpful for us to have more regular representation from our Member of Congress in the new smaller fifth district. In the in the state House and Senate, there is still a district dividing line at the Admiral Fluviana line. So we're represented in both the 55th and 56th House District and both the 10th and 11th Senate District. That could be helpful if the town wants to send representatives to two senators and two delegates. We have a seat at the table there. But but splitting up the town into multiple districts feels awkward for us. What that means for Election Day 2022, barring any other changes in state law, is that a Fluvana County resident would go to the Cunningham precinct and would see the fifth district for Congress and Scottsville Town Council. And then in 2023, that same Fluvana resident would see the 56th district and the 10th district. But an Admiral resident going to Scottsville Elementary would see different House and Senate folks. We'd vote at the two different places, Cunningham and Scottsville Elementary, instead of here. Which has the advantage of putting all your races on one ballot, but the disadvantage of not being able to walk here voting place.
Well, in the end, though, that and so if you were in the town of Scottsville is all in one district. If it aren't, if the Fluvana resident no longer votes in the Cunningham location, or you still go there, so you'd be voting for representative?
If they had drawn a district that just included a little chunk of Fluvana, then we'd already but they didn't seem to do that. The General Assembly session starts on Wednesday. At this point, I don't see either of our local representatives having prefiled any bills. And the town hasn't taken a strong position expressly on anything before the legislature. So I'll I'll keep watching issues like the state budget that might help or hurt the town. And we have a chance to check in on that in February. The, as requested, a little bit more of a community meeting, sort of focus group style to key in on these projects. Share updates of the information that we know so far and focus on what they might look like and what kinds of conditions might be most helpful. I got some outside facilitation help on this, not being trained in running that kind of focus group method. Jeff Sadler is a former colleague of mine from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Who specialized in that community organizing kind of work at a state level, moving all over the state to help localities do it. He's part-retired and has his own consulting shop in Richmond now on this topic. He also serves as a member of the City of Richmond's Planning Commission. And helped with an award-winning comprehensive plan that they updated recently, which really got high marks all through the national planning industry for its level of community engagement through all different areas of Richmond. So he's really excited to come here and work on some of the same issues with a very specific action item and clear deliverables, and on a very small scale. So he's been calling a diverse list of residents to interview them in advance of the meetings and invite them to Saturday. Trying to get a small group, both for healthy conversation and physical health. He's running three sessions, an hour and a half long, at 11 o'clock, 12:30, and 2 PM on Saturday. Everyone is welcome, but he's also making an effort to extend specific invitations to a diverse range of our community. So old and young, grew up here, didn't grow up here, renters, homeowners, white and black. So that everyone's represented. We don't always see that at our public hearings. So he's very interested in some feedback. He'll have some new pictures. He's got a graphic designer and engineer on subcontract, so he'll have some sort of bird's eye view of these proposals that we haven't seen before, and that might help to kind of get a sense of the look and feel of it. And he'll be happy to take feedback, set up new ideas, and focus on possible conditions. And and weigh the options that we've heard so far of whether this is a go or no go, or what might make it as as healthy and consensus building as we can. As Mr. Bowling said, we put our possible conditions through some legal review already, and we feel good about how they hold up. So we look forward to kind of testing community opinion on different packages of them. And we'll be able to turn the results of those meetings right around and get those to you as part of next Tuesday's meeting.
Everybody still hearing me?
Yes, sir. It's all yours.
Two two comments on the Blenheim Road project. One of the one of the conditions relates to a pond which the town is going to have dedicated to it. I just wanted to be sure that this pond's not subject to what's called the Virginia Dam Safety Act. That can impose a lot of very large expenses on the person that finds himself to be an owner of the dam. In a particular case, I've told Matt about this, and I sent Matt a little quick calculator, which will enable him to to see pretty quickly. I did. If I can do it, I think Matt can do it with with this little calculator. It involves determining the depth of the pond and the width of it, approximately how much water it has on it, to see whether it's subject to the requirements. And if it is subject to the dam safety acts, you better be careful on on accepting that old dam and pond. I'm sorry.
Bird Street.
Yeah. Bird Street. I had a problem. One of the one word that was used in the low and moderate income housing requirement. And and that is that you wanted that housing to be permanent. And and I my discussion with Matt is that permanent is a long, long time. It's it's forever. And things change. And the other thing that that seems to me, and again, I I could be completely all base here, but one of the objectives that that I've devised for the town in wanting to make sure that a portion of this housing is available for low and moderate income people, which whose incomes really are are not insubstantial. They can be fairly high, at least in the general scheme of things, but not so high as the incomes for this surrounding community, which is really, really very wealthy. But you want your people who buy these homes to be able to take advantage of the increase in value and the pride of homeownership and participate in that. But one of the things you do by making designating, I think it's what, five houses, Matt, permanent low-income housing, it always remained that way, is that essentially whoever moves into that housing is going to not going to get the benefit of the sweat of their labor in in making improvements for that property, and they won't have the benefit of of buying what is what in what I'll call a starter home, although some look upon it as a permanent home, and and moving on, and then finally somebody else moving into it. So you might want to think a little bit about using that term permanent, and what really what your intentions are for reserving housing for low and moderate income buyers. I know there are a number of low income.
Where is that language about permanent low income, five term?
Not not something Planning Commission was considering. So since since Planning Commission took a look at this, trying to draft up something else that responded to some of the other community feedback. So I put that in my staff report as some additional thoughts of some kind of commitment by condition to affordability. And then quickly getting into the struggles, both from the applicant's perspective and Mr. Bowling. So if that's, it's pretty complicated to actually execute that and require it. What we have so far is a firm interest from Habitat for Humanity that, yes, they are interested. This is part of their service area. They would certainly try to do a project in Scottsville. And this kind of site plan fits the bill for what they do. But what we hear from from both sides is that the best way to make that happen might not be for the town to require it.
Right.
Let that let that deal be done if it's to be done on its own.
Yeah.
The dam caution, I also take very much to heart and seriously. The town is the owner of one high-hazard dam and has some significant maintenance and inspections requirements. We don't take on another one lightly. So we might be better served if what we really want is just the walking trails, that we take the walking trails and not be responsible for the pond and the village green there. We also heard community feedback that maybe that's not the most useful thing in the world as a park anyway, that it mostly looks like the backyard of these residents. If we really think that it's mostly going to be their backyard and their space, maybe we let that go and keep the keep the trails. Then that might not be biting off more than we can chew for maintenance. Planning Commission was uncertain on that point. They were they were trying to they expressed concerns about the maintenance issue on this. Maybe. It's definitely the focus of the in-person activity on the meeting. It didn't get through any kind of door-to-door or phone banking work on that last week. We could push on that this week.
So we can, and that can help you create that.
Okay.
One pager. And if you can get some folks to go on for it, get those things out to folks. Doors, so people know they're going to be having this again. If you can't make it, do something.
Okay.
And what if that could have fallen? I mean, it's by the register.
Yeah.
We can have, like, that would
Sure.
be another broadcast that the meetings are happening on Saturday. You could see it, social media, whatever. And they can drag that, fill it out, even if they're not put them on Saturday.
Sure. Yeah, I'd really like to make it as easy as possible for many people to talk to guys, be that. In some kind of quality form, so that. You can look at it. In addition to the comments that come in. That's in the, in the. Of feedback, I think they do feel much more comfortable.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I hope that you get a big sense of.
Yeah. Um, should I? I, I think our conditions are worded pretty clearly about, you know, there, it's, it's legal. Um, but I, I think the wording of it is pretty clear about this is what they're gonna have to do. Are, are you, are you okay with using that text?
Yeah.
And testing it and saying, hey, which of these things is the most important to you, important, not important?
No, we're having rank.
Rank.
Rank all of those things, what's the most important, second, what's important, and then. Because, because that's the kind of decision that we're gonna have to make.
Mm-hmm.
Is, you know, if everything is most important, then it doesn't help make a decision about which one people.
You don't want to get on like. Sure.
And Stuart, are you talking about? These conditions? Uh, yes, and I'd love to put something at the bottom saying, do you have any other things you'd love to consider?
I think Chris has something considered up already.
Yeah.
He does.
Uh.
We don't feel like.
Uh, interim. Helping on it, yeah, there was any other.
I'd love to get that out of the hands, really, you know, people who came and did first time out of the sector. And so happens that going at my, my practice, so we'll have. But, you know, I had something else.
Yep.
You know, pretty short notice, and we'll know that we're loading on, on Tuesday, so I wanted to see if we can do. In terms of how much to get, must be that.
Thank you. Um. Okay, um, we have our applicants here.
Yeah.
And they, um, they did also send in some revised drawings based on uh Planning Commission's recommendation. I had been unclear um when Planning Commission acted, especially on the reduced density, what would that do to this project? So I asked for a set of drawings responding to that. Um, it's important to note, the application is still for the original density, um, they, they still feel that the, the highest density is justified on these. But they, they went ahead and provided a set of drawings to match what Planning Commission recommended.
Okay.
So if, if council were interested in keeping the Planning Commission recommendation, that would be a site plan that you could refer to. Um, so I, I think they're happy to share the changes and um answer any questions about where we stand at this point.
Matt, what did, did you know? Of uh.
Um.
Like, how many happened this?
Yeah, Alex on the, on the Bird site, um, it's a twelve-acre tract, and the zoning is four units per acre, so the application is for forty-eight houses. Planning Commission recommended a smaller number, thirty-six, averaging, averaging three per acre. Over on the Blenheim site, it's a, um, it's a nine-acre, an eight-acre, eight-acre tract, nine-acre tract. Nine, nine-acre tract, and the application was for thirty-six, Planning Commission cut that in half, nine times two is eighteen.
Okay, and uh, just to circle back to, to the uh Saturday meeting, and I'm just trying to get in while I can here, um, where is that going?
Um, here, here at Victory Hall, four oh one Valley Street, but downstairs in the theater, not in this room.
Okay, in the theater, is there any way we could find a bigger venue to get more people in, you know, kind of into a one meeting? And rather than splitting it up, or is that not feasible?
Um, we actually like the smaller space better and, and splitting it up, that when it gets to be too big of a group, you kind of lose the ability for one person to talk at a time, so we, we like the small group setup.
Okay.
I'd like to often listen, but I think that, that's not. Alright, any other questions or comments on this? Anyone have anything they would like to talk about? Uh, before we go.
I, I will mention that um, I sent an email out to everybody a few weeks ago about a Patriot cross sticker that's here on town. I think maybe it's something uh, recognize to be a Nazi group, which is one of the just, like, right for Alex, and another type of period town. Um, that's one of the, you know. He did not know.
I was, yeah. You have an email?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
That was, yep, um, Cody took off a couple more after you reported the first one, and then a few weeks went by with nothing.
Wait, not others?
Around the time, same time as the first one.
Matt, these are all, seriously, it's a recession. And uh, I agree. It's four, that's, yeah, look, twenty.
I, I think so, I think that's a, that's well spaced out in the um, in the audience room there and won't be too crowded, and I think three, three sets of fifteen or twenty would be just fine.
Of course, we have no idea. Everybody has a big reputation for.
It'll, it'll help me if I know some RSVPs on Facebook, um, and I might encourage people to go to one or the other. Um, if the first one fills up, I'll ask people to just come to a later one. Um, I will report it, um, and if, uh, if somebody's uncomfortable with the crowd size, I'd, I'd welcome them to tune in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we're down here.
Hey, Dad.
Yeah, I've, I've been here, I, maybe you didn't see me in there, but I've been here, um, just, I just wanted to say two things, was excited. Both with our new police chief, and just wanted to say that officially it's a blessing, and I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, because again, your creativity helped us be able to find. Uh, some wonderful people, and I so thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, and we're also excited for our new police chief, and also Alex, welcome, it's so exciting to have you as a fellow town counselor, and I really. A lot of you have heard me say this before, but I think the future of our town is in the hands of our young residents, and it's exciting to have another young resident on the council, so hang. Alex, welcome, and we're looking forward to all that you're gonna do on the council.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Hey, anything else, Mr. County Mayor? Not, so, anybody have anything else, we'll see you on Saturday.
Bye.